Recording.
I have an order in the ringlets. I'm Jeff Rasko, Mayor of Wood Creek and I am hereby calling the special policy council public hearing of order. It's November seventeenth, twenty twenty five and six P M. We're meeting here at the Wimberly V F W post sixty four forty one. I ask everyone as you are willing and able to rise for this moment of silence and or remain rise. Please. Lindley. And to the republic. In fifty is hope with liberty and justice for all. Uh. Three seconds.
One. One.
And then. Where where's my where? And as many times as I've ever. And when I I can do it later than I just. All right, so we're called to order. This is it is special meetings. And the the purpose is to conduct a public hearing and to receive public comments on pending Aqua water rate change request application, which is submitted to the city and related to the separate Public Utility Commission docket number five eight one two four. This is an application about Texas need for the authority to change rates and any matters related to saying, including but not limited to all the stuff that we're going to talk about tonight. So as a public hearing, we want your comments. It's not a question answer. I mean, so don't expect that. But you know, we you have pages paper to write your public comments on. We will read those out. And our is for our council and I'll introduce Mayor Pro Tim Chris Grummer. I don't know. My seven is a form. My seven is a form. No, we don't need real law. Mayor is seven is a form. Okay, so. Um, you stand up and say hi. Mayor Chris Grummer. Mayor Mayor elect, Deborah Hines. Councilmember Russell Scott. Councilmember Linae Bayley. And a member, Lisa Wilkinson. Lover on the back or crack staff, Jim Burton. Period. And and at the on the panel representing Aqua Texas, Ray Ricanelli, who is the state controller for Aqua. Vincent Cricks, who's our Central Texas area manager. And Scott Foltz, who's the environmental compliance manager. And in my love, your right, we have Lauren Ice, who's a special counsel working at the city of Wood Creek. And Stan Springer, who is our Wood Creek City Attorney with Vincent Navari. So the way this is going to start off, our attorneys are going to begin with sort of an explanation of the case and where they are and why they're here and what's going on. And then we'll move through the agenda. So you should have an agenda with you and we'll leave them there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and presidents. My name is Stan Springer, Dent Navari, City Attorney for the city. The city received an application from Aqua dated June eighteenth of this year, delivered to the city with an intent to change water and wastewater rates for customers. This application is just for customers within the city limits. Now, there is a separate proceeding filed with the Public Utilities Commission of Texas. And that that proceeding covers service areas outside the city. The scope of this public hearing is for within the city. So there's a preference. If you are a customer or a stakeholder accountable or within the city limits, then you are asked to give your public input. This is not related to a court procedure. This is under the authority of Texas Water Code, section thirteen dot zero four two, which grants exclusive initial jurisdiction to the local government here, the city, over water-related utility rates. And like I mentioned, there is a separate proceeding going on with HUT. The key phrase is initial jurisdiction. The city had several options. They consented through the rate change. They could do so expressly by taking a vote and accepting it or by taking no action at all. And then after the passage of time, the rate would go into effect. The city here has chosen to not approve or immediately deny it, but rather to gather more information to due diligence, to look at the merits. Now, I'll be honest with you. You know, the city is a small city. And it's not going to have bandwidth. It's not going to have experts on staff that can look at these complicated issues and the reports and the studies and and all the supporting exhibits. It's pretty voluminous. So it's important for the city to take time and not rush into making a decision. And that's the purpose of this meeting. So as part of this process, that included doing a suspension of the rate increase in order to allow time for this further information gathering. And eventually holding this public hearing. Although we're not before, and this is a public hearing before city council, we're receiving testimony from stakeholders, the new public, the rules of decorum do apply. So we encourage you to be cordial, to provide your feedback. You can ask questions. It's not a deposition. We're not doing back and forth immediately. We're not answering questions right away. It's up to the discretion of the city council. If they have something they want to address, they can ask the presiding officer, they can address that and go ahead and address it. But generally speaking, we're just receiving the comments. And then at the end, there will be some both African presentations from the state law. So we go ahead and ask this to Lauren.
I'm going to stay seated if that's okay, because I'm going to get into the nitty gritty a little bit here. So my name is Lauren Ice. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Paralyssal and Ice. We primarily practice environmental and administrative law. And as my Will Platter says here, I'm just special counsel on this matter related specifically to the optimal rate, the rate change. And so I want to start by providing a very broad overview of how investor-owned utilities are regulated before we get into the details of what's an Aqua was application to the city of Wood Creek. But first, I think it's also important for y'all to know that in this broader rate-making proceeding, that's proceeding before the Public Utility Commission that Stan just mentioned, I also represent the Watershed Association in addition to the city of Wood Creek and Hayes County. And I want to make sure folks here tonight understand that that the city is not paying me for my time to do that. Because this is nothing that's costing the city ratepayers any additional money. This is something that the Watershed Association is paying for at the moment. So to start, our state law, our Texas Water Code acknowledges that investor-owned utilities like Aqua Texas are by definition a monopoly in the areas where they serve. Because they're going to be the only utility that's doing that type of business inside their C C N. That's their that's a fancy term for in the area where they serve customers. There are not the typical forces of competition that help to regulate and make sure you as a ratepayer are getting a good cost for your service and good quality of service. And so that is why entities like the P U C and why the city are regulating are regulating Aqua to assure your rates, the operations, the services are just and reasonable. We're going to come back to that term. And both to the consumers, to you all, and to the retail public utilities. And they also are going to make sure that the the utility furnishes services and facilities that are safe, adequate, efficient, and reasonable. And we'll come back to that term as well. So at the end of the day, the rates that Aqua is allowed to charge are designed so that the utility can recover the revenue that's necessary to cover its cost of service. They can add to that a modest return on their investment that they make on capital project in their community. It sounds really simple, but as Stan was saying, it's actually very, very complicated as to how those rates are set. So what triggers a rate change like the one that Aqua has submitted now? Well, it could be that the utility decides itself that its rates are too low to cover its cost of service. Or it could be that the P U C or another party determines that the rates are too high and they're recovering too much money to cover their cost of service. And here, I think just a quick history would be helpful because I believe that it's a little bit of both in this situation. So as Aqua customers, y'all are probably aware that in twenty twenty two, April of twenty twenty two, Aqua filed an application requesting a system improvement charge for its water and sewer rates. And it sought to recover several million dollars from all of its customers around the state. If this is a case that went before the Public Utility Commission, this is a case in which the parties ultimately settled. It did not get there without an outcome from a judge, but there was a settlement. And what that resulted in is an increase on y'all's bills that would have showed up as eleven dollars and twenty six cents as an S I C charge for water and a four dollar ninety four cent charge for sewer. So that's on top of your base rate right now. No matter how much water you use, you pay that S I C charge. And some of y'all may have seen that on your bill and we're looking at how this is going to affect that rate. Also, as a part of that decision, there was an order that told Aqua they had to file for a comprehensive rate case, which is what they've done now, uh, within two years. So by September of twenty twenty five. So they have both come in and applied for this rate change early, but they were under an order from the P U C to file for this rate change. So they really they didn't have a choice. They did have to file for it. Now, as many of y'all know, in twenty twenty three, on the heels of that S I C decision, Aqua applied for another S I C. And that was a proceeding where they were asking for to recover capital improvement costs that they had invested in in the last, it was between January twenty twenty two and July twenty twenty three. That would have ended that existing S I C that we just talked about, except that that application was denied. And many of y'all probably saw on your bills, let me see if I can get the exact date right, in August of twenty twenty four, an uptick to your S I C charge. And then in February twenty twenty five, when that application was denied, they were ordered to reimburse or refund or credit, which is most likely what y'all saw. Credit that S I C application that was denied. And so you would have seen that S I C charge go back down on your bill and you would have seen a credit on your bill in twenty twenty five. So Aqua has now filed for a comprehensive rate change application. So I just want to make sure y'all understand this is not another S I C application. This is a comprehensive rate change application. And it and one thing that is involved here is it's not just going to change rates for the city of Wood Creek. It's going to change. And then we're talking about the P U C application now, not just one for the for Seaver Creek. But it's going to change rates for everybody and the 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 Aqua retail customer in Texas. And one thing that they're seeking to do is to consolidate all of the customers into one sewer rate and one water rate. And that means people inside the city limits of of Wood Creek would have the same rate that they're also applying or applying to 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 attach to residents or to to ratepayers outside of the city of Wood Creek. So the reason I bring this up is just to be really clear with y'all. That means right now there's basically two applications that are pending that the city of Wood Creek is watching at the same time. First, it's the application to the city to change rates inside the city limits that Stan mentioned. And the city has to either accept or deny this application. And then there's the second parallel application that they've applied to the P U C to change rates. And those rates would ultimately be the same tier, the same rate structure as what they've applied to the city of Wood Creek. What this means for the city is that if the city accepts the rates, then Aqua can implement those proposed rates inside the city limits. If, however, the city denies the rate increase, the reapplication pending before it at this moment, then Aqua may appeal that decision. And the effect of that in in reality is is that they would appeal it into this ongoing rate case, consolidate it with that with the ongoing rate case, and it would be they would just be a part of the overall rate that is currently pending before the P U C. So I only I want to say that just so everybody understands that the that that that's the likely outcome if the city denies the denies the rates. So what is the application that is currently pending here in the city of Wood Creek? What would that do? As Stan said, it's really complicated because the change, the overall change is going to lower the base rate, but it is going to add a change the volumetric rate. Effectively, people who are using very, very little water may end up seeing a rate reduction under the current proposal as it as it's current proposed. However, in Aqua's application, it provides that in our area, the average consumer, the average ratepayer uses about six thousand gallons of water per month. And looking at their own application, that would see an average residential bill, six thousand gallons a month, go up about eighteen percent. Now, I want to also emphasize that what this would do, this this would not include an S I C charge anymore. So if Aqua came back and wanted to again ask for another S I C in the future, that would be on top of this rate increase. So just so folks are aware of that. On sewer, if you're a sewer customer, again, using just the average residential amounts and what Aqua has put in their application, six thousand gallons per month. If you're a if you're a metered customer, your increase would go up about forty percent. So having said that, if you have questions that have to do specifically with how much water you use and what you what kind of bill you could expect, you wouldn't even write that down because again, that's just the average. But I wanted to provide everybody that so you have some context. Now, tonight, I'm here as special counsel. I am offering my recognition to the city council. And having reviewed the application that's pending both in front of the city and also having reviewed the application that's pending at the P C, having reviewed much of the supporting documentation and spoken with technical experts who are much smarter than I am when it comes to trying to evaluate financial documents that support this application, my recommendation would be for the city to deny the rate change with the understanding that this will likely get consolidated with the larger rate case that's pending. And that is an opportunity for the city to continue to ask questions of Aqua, to continue to examine that information. We still have a lot of questions that we just haven't been able to get the answer to yet. And it would allow them to continue to do with due diligence the way that Stan was explaining and and to ensure that the rates are fair and just and make sure they reflect the quality of service that all Aqua customers are receiving. And so I say this, uh, leading into the public hearing to ask that when you provide your comments, I am particularly interested to hear two main things from you. Whether you believe your rates and the services you get from those rates that you pay are just and reasonable and whether you believe the service you receive is reliable, safe, adequate service. And so, um, you know, answer the questions like, do you do you think your service is good? Do you think you pay the right price for the kind of service that you get? Do you receive good water quality? You can can like reliably and consistently receive good water quality. And it whenever you have problems and you reach out to Aqua, do they address your concerns, you know, in a timely manner and in a full and complete manner? And if your answers to those questions are yes, please explain. And if your answers to those questions aren't no, I would love to hear an explanation for that reason as well. So I will open it up, I believe, to the to Aqua. Yeah, to respond. And thank you all for your time.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Pretty good turnout. Uh, my name is Baby Cricks and I have the privilege of serving as the area manager for Central Texas, uh, of Aqua Texas. We appreciate y'all coming to speak with you tonight about our break case, what means, why it's necessary and why it's ultimately the next step forward for the community. I understand when people hear the words rate case, uh, it can be concerning. However, uh, rate cases about shipment can continue by quality, reliable and service for your community for years to come. It's a formal regulated process, uh, like we were discussing here, uh, where we file information with the Public Utility Commission of Texas, often known as the P U C. They review our cost of operation and investments to determine rates. Sorry, to determine rates that are fair and reasonable for for both the customer and Aqua Texas. In short, it ensures that the rates you pay accurately reflect the real cost of developing water and wastewater service and that we can continue investing in a system to make that possible. Uh, over the past twenty years, Aqua has invested nearly seventeen million right here in Wood Creek, an amount that equals roughly twenty thousand per customer in the community. Uh, those investments include backup generators to keep water flowing during, uh, power outages, major wastewater upgrades protecting, uh, that help protect the environment and advanced metering technology that improves billing accuracy and helps us protect or helps us detect leaks and better conserve water. Uh, these improvements have played a critical role in keeping these systems resilient and operational, especially through the years of less severe drought that this region region has endured. We also recognize, uh, that the level of investment represents a significant commitment by Aqua. That's why for many years, Aqua Texas used a regional rate structure so that the full cost, these improvements, if even bringing us didn't fall solely on. Instead, the costs have been shared across Central Texas, helping balance out affordability with the need for continued investment. This is partly the reason why we are opposing to move the statewide rate structure that's in this ongoing rate case to better spread the the cost. And more considerate rate would allow Aqua Texas to continue investing, investing robustly in communities across the state. For example, we spent one hundred and thirty two million across Texas last year, while also spreading the cost across a large, larger number of customers. I also wanted to acknowledge how much Aqua Texas, uh, involved over the past, how Aqua Texas has been involved over the past several years in Wood Creek and across Wood Creek. We focus on becoming a company that is more responsive, transparent, and connected to the community's service. When there's a drought, a storm, a service issue, our team is here and present, ready to respond and to keep your water system running as it's supposed and as smooth smoothly as it can. In closing, the rate case represents a continuation of the commitment we have with all of you here today by earning a fair return on the investment we've already made. Aqua Texas will continue improving infrastructure, they can't figure out resilience and assure safe, dependable service for years to come. We're proud of the progress we've made here in Wood Creek and we're grateful for the partnership along the way. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate it.
Right, so we'll move into the public comment section. And we have comments that like to turn in to accept them here with the mayor. If you have your written comments that you'd like to share, we're going to give priority, um, obviously to send us to the Wood Creek as far as for your address. If we have time, um, may take written comments or non-rate events that are also Wood Creek customers, ratepayers. I do have one written comment that was sent in by Steve O'Neil in advance. And it says simply, I live in Wood Creek. I disagree with Aqua asking for a rate increase. I believe the rate request should go forward to the P U C. I also would like to know what Aqua is currently doing and their future timeline for repairing their aging and leaking water lines. How do they propose to address that issue, whether they receive their rate increase or not? And thank you, Steve O'Neil. And we'll share these with the both our attorneys and the evidence. Donna Hector. Uh, my water usage varies from nine hundred and ninety gallons. That's back in September twenty four. And what it does, seven hundred in a month when I was only home for eleven days, according to your computer. I have no leaks. Your people checked it out. If you want to write, bring my notes, be great. From Gail Whitlander. How does Wood Creek water and sewer rates compare to Wimberly, city of Wimberly? I would I would note that, um, city of Wimberly, I mean, like Wood Creek or Wimberly Water Supply doesn't handle handle wastewater. So their sewer rates, I would assume if they're on, they're one of the groups that run the Aqua would be having said, because we got other comments. I have a comment myself. As a as a ratepayer and and representing the city and working with Aqua. Something that Benton said is true. I mean, since since I've been working with Leadership Blocker Texas and Aqua America over the last four years, you know, they have they have tried to become better corporate citizens. They are here. They are visible. They helped the city of Wood Creek quite a bit. I looked at my own rates and as a we don't use that much. And we would see we could would see probable reduction in our in our water rates at home. Um, we've always said that we want the people who are overusing, you know, to to pay the difference. The wastewater is a different thing. So that's what I'm interested in in the in the overall rate case is whether the wastewater figures could be based on historical consumption over the winter months rather than average. But I don't I don't put as many gallons down the pipes as come out of pipes. So my comment, other comments? Council. Now, there's this writing. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to comment on, uh, expand on Steve O'Neil's comment. I guess I need to ask you guys. We've heard that the pipes leak and that there's a lot of water that's the steam wasted. They were focusing on the dirty water. Now, I know there was a lot of work done at Wood Creek North. But is there a plan to continue that repair in Wood Creek?
They're not going to, we're not going to do a question and answer. Your comment is is taken. Um, this comment from Lindsay Lewandowski, nine four champion circle. I disagree with Aqua's proposal to increase rates. Quality of water is by far one of the worst I've ever experienced. Yet I am paying more than I ever have. I'm interested in what the hundred and thirty two million was spent on across Texas over the last year and how they are how they're connected to the human. And how they are, um, how they're connected to the human, to our community. And in instances where rates are increasing eighteen to forty percent, when is it enough for audio, when is it, um, no longer fair interest? This from John Oakdale, twenty champion circle. Does Aqua still have a contact with the double J for their gray water? I assume that it is. Yeah, the, what, what, uh, what Mr. Del Sung, the, the double J golf course is long used. Um, wastewater from, uh, from their plant, from the Oppa plant in order to irrigate their, their golf course rather than using local water. Other questions, comments? All right, if none, um, we'll if one, if none, if one. Uh, why the forty percent increase in sewer? Um, good question. Um, but it, it does cost more to process sewer than to, to bring water in, but they could, uh, probably expand on that, they might in their closing comments. All right, if no others, then, um, we will move to the, um, closing comments and, uh, we'll start, uh, with, uh, our attorneys.
I thought that was fine.
But not now. Would you like to pass the mic?
If you're, if you're a citizen, if you're a citizen in Wood Creek and you would like to stand and speak out of the mic. Have you got, that was Charlie. They're not, they're not here to, they're here to listen to your comment. Um, they're, they're not here to answer questions, they're not. Please identify yourself and tell us where you live.
Uh, Gillette, Rumbaugh, on fifteen Palm Lane. And I know when I contacted the local, um, Aqua Texas representatives, nobody answered the phone and voicemail to full. When I called Aqua Texas in New Jersey and asked questions back when we were, I don't know what stage, but it was, uh, you couldn't water your yard. I called them and they said I could. So something is missing here as far as test service.
Anyone else?
One thing that has been a concern to us a couple of times and I'm changing it to, oh, no, Augusta. Um, we had a couple of days where our water bill would be, um, just suck high, where we know we did not use the water. And we would call and, uh, of course we would check up permanently, you know, we check all this and there would be no problem. And there was never an explanation about why that would jump up like hundreds of gallons of water. That's happened a couple of times.
Can you quick question, I mean, was your, was your bill adjusted?
We didn't notice the overall bill being more than we didn't notice that our monthly bill would be way out of range, but it would just be certain days. And one of them was like at two AM in the morning. It just really odd times and odd amounts. So we wondered if someone was coming and stealing our water and stuff.
I just want to add on to that through our city attorney's, uh, knowledge. I've talked to at least three people, have experienced the same thing. I also experienced the same thing. Uh, in all honesty, mine was my fault. Uh, I have a faulty, uh, they didn't find it, they didn't know what it was, but I had a faulty water faucet where when you turn it off, it just keeps turning and actually turns back on. If you thought it was off, so it was slowly leaking. But I, I, I've heard from numerous residents, the same story of mystery water usage between midnight and four AM, uh, in the thousandth of gallon. And, and nobody that I've talked to, they've, they've all said that Aqua was very responsive. They've come out, they've tested the lines, checked everything, put a fifty gallon, uh, five gallon bucket of water, you know, throw up a five gallon bucket. It's exactly what he reads on the meter. So that's great, but, you know, this is like six people or seven people now, that's just the ones I've heard of, but there's gotta be more. Uh, that, that's really concerning to me. I, I, I don't know what that's about, but I, I would, I'm very concerned about.
Way in that.
Okay, there was Shane, I look at four Palmer Lane. Question I have is that there's still again the, uh, I know the water got cut off altogether because the generator went out, there's a lack of fuel. Did you at least in, increase the fuel capacity for your generator? So that we won't, won't lose water like that during, uh, middle of, uh, have to do snowmelt, trying to get around at least a plus of minutes.
Anyone else?
Well, I guess I would just say in closing that, um, this, uh, you know, if, I guess the city has already intervened in the ongoing, uh, rate case of sending before the P C. Uh, so I do anticipate that this process is going to continue. And if folks have comments or issues that come up or questions that they would like, you know, you know, someone to look into. Um, I'd be happy to hear those and, uh, and I think it'd be valuable information for us to consider um, as the process is ongoing. I will say also too, just so folks are aware of that process, my understanding is as of right now, there is an effective date, so even if the city were to deny the rate case tonight, if it were to get appealed into a comprehensive rate case at the P U C, the effective date of, which is currently right now, December twenty-second, would mean that, um, all rate payers would likely still see an increase on their bills at that time. My understanding, again, so it's, um, it, it's not final yet, but that the intent of Aqua and the P C staff right now is to call those interim rates. Meaning if the, during the proceeding, a lower rate is actually what the commission would approve. Then as, um, as, as was done in the last S I C case, any overcharges, then they, they would then be obligated to refund those or credit those back to you. Um, this is not an abnormal situation, these kinds of things, um, it may feel a little bit unfair to have you start paying notes before it's final. But it is pretty common in the P U C proceedings for it to play out that way. Uh, but I just want to forecast that for y'all so that y'all are aware, if you, you know, if you see that change happening, that that's what's going on. And yes, I see a question.
I, I said a quick question, you mentioned you'd like to hear more, if somebody has more to share. What's the best way to get that to you? Through a Wood Creek email or direct email to you or?
I am happy to share my, yeah, direct contact information and, um, uh, why don't I give you all my phone number for my office, which is five one two four six nine six thousand. And again, my name is Lauren Ice, y'all can call me directly. You can also send me an email at L A U R E N at T X EnviroLaw dot com. If you think you want to read that to me, just, just call me. Um, and, uh, yeah, I listed you can get my contact information. And so, um, yeah, if you think of specific issues that you would like to see addressed, please don't hesitate uh, to reach out, I think that's all I have unless folks have other questions.
So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for showing up tonight. Public participation is super important. It shows interest and sometimes as, uh, residents you feel helpless and it's important to, to, to raise your voice. Uh, even if it's just showing up and listening. So any proceeding like this is always going to have arguments on both sides. And it's important to, um, look at all of the information. I think ultimately the question is whether or not there is adequate assurance on the merits of the application. And ultimately, this is a policy decision for the government body, the city council to make. To determine what's in the best interest of the public and of the residents of the city.
Thank you, everybody, you have made progress and all of you for being here. Uh, I'm going to just quickly do a quick little closing, um, try to answer a couple of these questions. I don't have anything particularly prepared. Um, want to touch on capital, uh, investment. Um, yeah, we are committed to continuing the capital investment, uh, within Wood Creek and the surrounding area. I know this for residents of Wood Creek, um, to answer, I think, one of the questions, uh, about water loss in the city itself, it's actually quite low. Our, our game made challenges hard in Wood Creek North. We committed to capital investment there to reduce that. Um, we have a, they have actually agreed that meetings day on major wastewater, uh, work. Only for a plant that serves your community. That particular plant is going to be put in place. We're going to increase the level of treatment there, uh, so the question was about golf course. Yes, we do still provide water to the golf course. Um, as that increases and improves equality there, we will have greater opportunity to offer that water to other folks as well. Uh, with increases, so, uh, we will continue that capital investment that's been in. Um, there was a question on the fuel and the generator, generator is actually due since, um, when it's longer, so we should be good there. Um, one of the things with the wet farms in particular is, um, freezing of service on us and a little bit of difficulty in addressing that, just really, uh, in the service on the streets, but, um, so from a large part, uh, you know, we, we can definitely address and, and with the council and the mayor, uh, achieve capital investment uh, within the city surrounding. Um, otherwise I will take again, all coming, uh, mindful of your time. I will send up your green package. So thank you again. The mayor asked about a little more detail about the wastewater plant upgrade, um, between type two and type one. So right now, the quality of, uh, uh, F one that the plant produces is applicable for golf courses, green spaces and, and things of that nature. Um, we are upgrading that to type one, uh, that's much higher quality water. Um, that then can be used for, uh, areas of public content, ball fields, parks, things of that nature. Uh, you know, there's no specific right now mandate or anything for that, that's just something that was asked of Aqua, uh, by the community and
All right, so, um, so we've gone through the regular agenda, item number one. You know, item number two is that, um, the council would go into executive session with our legal counsel. This is executive session under Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with legal counsel. Uh, related to legal options pertaining to the pending Aqua rate change requests. So, um, we're going to do that. Um, and rather than have all y'all go out on the parking lot and let us go into executive session. Um, we're going to go back here in the back room and quietly, um, have a conversation and y'all can wait or not, um, when we come out, um, the last item on the agenda is discuss and take possible action to act on the application of Aqua Texas Inc. for the authority to change rates in Wood Creek. So it is, uh, that six forty-seven looks like, and we will be going into executive session.
According to
It is seven oh five coming out of executive session, I think, or ready of sessions. Uh, last item on the agenda, the suggestion and possible action to act on application of Aqua Texas Inc. for the authority to change rates in Wood Creek, Texas.
Mayor, I know that we denied the application of Aqua Texas Incorporated for the authority to change rates in Wood Creek, Texas.
Signed it by Mr. Scott. Um, discussion, comment?
I'm going to turn to my back table to y'all. Um, where is Aqua? I just, a couple of words to the Aqua team, to the local guys, um, I want to formally say that I do appreciate the changes you've seen in the last few years. I do fleet, feel that responsiveness has improved. I do see you showing up and doing good locally and I'm grateful for that. I have moved to deny the rate case for the purpose of allowing our citizens to advocate for themselves and to get more time to do so, to ensure that the rates are the best we can possibly get. And so that is the goal, is to move this forward into more negotiation, more research, more discovery, to continue to advocate for the best possible rates for our residents.
Oh, anybody? So council prepared the, both of the motion, motion being to deny the application of Aqua Texas Inc. for the authority to change rates in Wood Creek, Texas. Uh, if they would please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. All opposed? Guys have it, five votes to zero. And I will hand down a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.